Danielle.
Okay, go ahead. Chief, do you want to be Danielle for the night?
He's good.
You don't like being in the hot seat, do you? It's not fun, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You ready? Okay. I want to call the April School of Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna do a roll call here.
Susan Brett here.
Mark Donovan.
Martha Majeski, and we have someone on the phone.
Bob Cooney.
Thank you. All right. So we did have an executive session this evening before our meeting started. We did discuss potential property acquisition, potential litigation, and personnel issues. We did not have a workshop meeting, so we didn't have an executive session then, and we did not have a forum at the Open Space Commission meeting. So, okay. I'll move on here. Our consent agenda. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' March 2nd, 2022 business meeting. The acceptance of reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of March 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, that sounds good, yeah.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'm abstaining.
And Mark is abstaining. Okay. Treasurers' report and payment of bills for the period ending March 31st, 2022. Consideration of acceptance of the Treasurer's report and approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Lori, would you care to make some comments?
Yes. So for the period ending March 31st, 2022, the general fund balance is $3,748,549.08. It's an increase over last month of about $375,000, $376,000. Year-to-date, we've realized about 22% of our general fund revenue and just under 17% of our general fund expenditures. And all of the bills for the month have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from public? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Two-minute reports. Board liaisons. Well, Mark, I guess you don't have anything. So Susan, do you have anything?
Um, I do. The EAC voted to have involvement, to request involvement in any township parks. And if we do any work in the township parks, they would like to have involvement in terms of giving thoughts on projects we're working on. So they made a motion to request that we involve them and things like that. It doesn't seem problematic to me. I think we can convey if there's something that needs to be done right away. We might not need to, you know, have time to get their input, but overall, it feels like we have a lot of good resources and knowledge on the board, the commission, so it seems like a good thing to me, but I just wanted to... That's something they... And I don't know, Lori, if we need to do something official. They made a motion to do that, but I don't know.
I don't think that the board needs to take any official action. I actually, I talked with Michelle Garg about this as well. She gave me an update after their last meeting, and we actually went out and walked Valley Park together the other day to look at some things. I don't see it as an issue. We kind of talked about it, and I agree. I think if, whenever we're doing, when we're planning big maintenance projects, we'll just plan to put it on an EAC agenda before we do it, so we can seek their input. Except for, like you said, I think if there's, there just will be an understanding that if it's an emergency, of course, we might not be able... I can let them know, but we might not be able to put it through a meeting first.
To make an obligation on your part to contact them. So say you missed one one time, then your action after that is illegal at this... But I don't think you need to take any of it.
Yeah.
So should I tell them, like, but we are trying to administratively put a process in place? Like Lori knows that's something the board would like to do and willing to do. Like which, how should I report back to them?
We'll try to keep you informed.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that that's... Yeah, I think that that's, that's fine.
We're aware of your concerns and we'll do our best to cooperate. But right then, the problem, it's him. He says, "Don't set up a formal requirement that you have to do something every time."
Has the EAC sued the Board of Supervisors?
Good, sounds good.
Yeah, I think Michelle and I can just keep open lines of communication, probably.
The EAC is also having a cleanup, but I apologize, I don't have the date handy.
I have that information for the announcements, so I can, I can let you know that. And just to let you know, Susan, because I just found out this afternoon, I am able to use the township truck.
Oh, great.
And I was able to rearrange my schedule, so I am available to do that.
Okay.
So Chief, we have those message boards, and for the pickup, the cleanup that the EAC is doing on Saturday, April 23rd, we would like to have those message boards along Paulings Road between Route 23 and the border of the township. If you could. The cleanup starts at 8:00. And we will be meeting at the Valley Forge Sewer Authority. And the fire police are doing traffic control for us.
We do have two minutes. I can give you...
Okay.
Danielle sent her, Danielle attended the PRPC meeting for me while I was out, and she did send all of her notes. So, so the PRPC is reviewing all the municipal zoning maps and ensuring consistency, so we'll be going over that next month, because they tabled it, because nobody there from Schoolville was able to partake in that conversation at the time. So I'll be dealing with that next month.
Okay, great. Bob, do you have any two-minute reports?
Nothing to report.
Okay. The only thing that I have is I just wanted to follow up with everyone about the ribbon-cutting ceremony that we're going to be having at Valley Park. I did speak with Jim Morrison. You're welcome. And, um... As is Jim Morrison's style, I asked him to get back to me with some information by the end of March, and he got it to me today at 2:00 Saturday. So I'll be sending out some emails about some people that we're going to be inviting. One of the things that he did ask, if you guys know, when we have events at the country club, sometimes Madeline would send out postcards as well as send out, like the emails through Constant Contact. Jim thought that would be a good idea. We didn't budget anything for that this year. Are you guys, do you guys feel strongly either way about that?
No.
I would feel, I prefer not to do postcards, but like that's...
I did manage to get the date into the township newsletter that will be, that will be mailed, I think, this week. So the date is in there that's being mailed to all of...
The township.
Yeah.
So that's good. That's good. Then that way it'll at least get that in the mail.
Yeah.
And then whoever wants it electronically, we can do it that way. There will be probably about 30 people that will get a paper invitation.
Okay.
And I'll, I just got a portion of that list today, so I'll make sure that I get that out to you.
Perfect.
So, um... There we go. Okay. Township manager.
I do have one. You see my notes here. I'm gonna do my best to keep it under two minutes. But I wanted to just kind of close the loop on the conversation we had last month about the proposal that the Historical Commission asked the board to approve. Some new information has come up since that meeting. So they were asking for the board to authorize a professional walkthrough on the House to, or to document all of the historical features in the House. And we had a big discussion about who was actually responsible for it. I have a contact at the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission from my prior municipality, because we had another historical property there. So I reached out to them, and they put me in touch with the individual who handles all of the restrictive covenants for PHMC. So I did talk to her, and she said that PHMC holds the covenant, and now that they're aware that the property has sold, they will be doing their own historic property inspection. That doesn't cost us anything. That's something that PHMC does. So they're coordinating that directly with the property owner. The township has to do nothing. And the Historical Commission had indicated, I told them about it as well, and they were going to reach out to PMC and PHMC and see if they could designate someone to tag along just so that they could be involved in the process as well. So that's something they're going to coordinate together. They did not have any documents on the restrictive covenant that was in that deed note or plan note number 30 that we talked about. They don't know anything about it. Thought that it was kind of odd. They've never seen that before. So that was something they were going to research, as well as the public access declaration. That seems to be something that's kind of an old-school way of doing things that was also not very common. They usually only see those on properties that PHMC owns and operates, like a museum property. They were also going to have their solicitor research that to see if that's something that they would enforce. And that, that was the document that said that the public could visit it so many times a year. So they're going to look into that. But at this point, there doesn't seem to be any reason for the township to expend any funds to do its own inventory. PHMC is going to do it, and they're going to give us a copy.
Oh, that's great. Oh, that's great.
That's always good news.
Yeah. Okay, other quick things. The ScanTech project is still moving along. We had our first pickup. That happened in March. They're building out our software. So I just got an email today that I should be doing a training session with them to go over like a sample of a scanned box with them next week to see if we like the way that they're archiving it. So that's moving along. Route 23 sidewalk project, we got official notice that we did receive a one-year extension on the grant from DCED, so that's great. So we're moving along on that.
And I signed that, I e-signed that document.
Yes, yes, and then I had to e-sign it several times, the whole thing.
Yeah, I know, me too.
The whole thing, but yeah.
Yeah, it was weird.
But we're good now. We have the one-year extension. FEMA update. Our FEMA rep came out here in person last week to meet with me and Nick to help us fill out the application, which is going to be very, very time-consuming and difficult, but we're working on it. He's actually coming back tomorrow to help me some more, so we are working through that. He, he said it would definitely be better to get that application done sooner rather than later, even though technically we have until May. He said, "Don't wait until May." So we're going to get that done. So he, he'll be back here tomorrow, so we're moving along on that as well.
And this is the money that we thought we would get this year?
Yeah, that's probably not...
That's not going to happen, no.
I mean, he's great, but, but there's also a FEMA portion to it as well. So FEMA will give us, it's a seven, I think it's a 75-25. So 75% of the money will come from FEMA. But then, for the other 25, we're at the mercy of FEMA, and I haven't had any contact with them. FEMA's been, I mean, they've been wonderful in helping, they're really walking us through how to do it. And the reason he's coming back tomorrow is because they gave us some guidance, and Nick went out and had to get GPS coordinates for all of the locations that we did the work, so...
Jeez.
I have a notebook that's like 20 pages long with photographs that I now have to catalog, but... But we're moving along on that, so that's good news. He felt pretty confident that, he, he was pleased with the records that we have, so that's, I'll take that as a good sign.
Okay.
2021 audited financials. We did receive the draft audited financials from Barbicane Thornton just last week, and our DCED annual filing was done before the, before the deadline, so that's done. And I am tentatively planning to have Jeff come out here from Barbicane Thornton to present at the May business meeting, to present the, the final audit.
Can we make sure that Peter is here, too?
Absolutely. Yeah, Peter and I are actually, Jeff and Peter and myself are going to have a meeting to go through all of the documents together, because this is also the first time that we've done... We, we changed the way that we do our audit, so this is kind of, it's a kind of a learning curve for everybody, so we're going to go through that in depth. And, and some of the, like we talked about before, and I know this was something we asked for of the auditors, was to give us recommendations on any policy changes that we could make and things that we can do to go above and beyond with our financials. So there were some management recommendations in there that Peter's going to help us to implement. Nothing unexpected, so overall, overall, pretty good.
But I think it would be good to have him here at our meeting.
Absolutely.
With that presentation.
Absolutely.
If he's, if he's able to attend. Do you guys, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I think that, I think that'd be great. He'd be happy to come.
Okay.
That's all I had. Was it two minutes?
That's all you have? It was more than two minutes, but it was, it was a good, it was a good, good thing. Okay. Two-minute reports. Chief.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, the police activity report was attached to your agendas. Did you have any questions regarding the numbers?
Did you have any arrests this month?
So, yeah, so criminal complaint. And also non-traffic citations or arrests, so it'd be your summary offenses, your disorderly conducts, your harassments. So, yeah, that, that's what those numbers represent.
Chief, would you care to, wish to inform the board and the public about the financial matter which came up this, this month? It's, it's a public matter concerning the decedent William Winn.
Oh, um, yeah.
I can handle if you, if you...
You, if you want to just get...
What happened was, we were notified with a, with a public filing that a citizen of the township passed away in December and his will left the police department bequest of $10,000.
Ah, that's nice. I mean, I'm sad that he's gone, but that's sweet that he thought it was.
The department doesn't have its own financial structure. They paid what they made to the township, but I presume the board will then assign it to the police for appropriate use. And so I just thought it was a, a nice thing for the police department that I would suggest that other citizens can consider it in their wills. Why not?
Yeah, it was, it was very nice. Obviously, you thought very highly of the police department, so...
The flyer company got a letter, or else we're getting something. We won't know how much until the, kind of the whole thing is settled out.
Oh, nice.
Nice.
Oh, nice. That's great.
When I worked for Dave, he was a really nice guy.
Oh, good. Nice. That's great.
I noticed you're doing more school checks.
Yes, we are.
That's great.
Our officers, so at least once a shift, are going in and stopping in. Couple times that they've asked the officers to stop into a classroom and talk to the kids. So it's been, it's been, it's been pretty good.
Oh, that's great. So that's awesome. That's really awesome.
There was a Facebook post that we put up, or that Manavon put up. With Officer McNelly, kids were pushing him on the swing, so... That was during his stop over there, so he seemed to be having a good time over there.
That's awesome. That's really great.
Moving on, I just have a few announcements. I think this flyer was attached as well. We're going to be doing our first Brew with the Blue, which is basically coffee with a cop, at My Favorite Muffin on May 5th. It's going to be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So we'll have some officers there. I'll be there, and residents can come out and have a cup of coffee, chat with the police. So that'll be our first time doing that.
I have that on the announcements, too, so I'll make that announcement later, too.
Okay. And a couple other things I just wanted to mention regarding the Phoenixville Area Police Athletic League. Throughout my career, I've always been a big supporter of PAL. I think it's an invaluable program that, in my former employment, I started at the PAL program there back in 2016, and I see the benefit of it, the tremendous benefit of it. Officer DiOrio is actually the executive director of the Phoenixville Area PAL. Does it, the whole organization does a great job. They have a couple events coming up. I just wanted to mention, one of them's actually a babysitting class. It's going to be on April 12th. They're still looking for some, some more students or kids to enter, to register for the class. They can hold up to 25. I believe Jimmy told me earlier they were at 22 or 23, so they have some spots available. It's at Phoenixville Middle School. Again, April 12th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's a, it's an all-day thing. They'll also cover some things like CPR, first aid. And then they're also running a golf clinic, which is going to begin on April 25th. It'll be the four consecutive Mondays beginning the 25th of April, 5:30 to 6:30 at the Knickerbocker Driving Range in Malver. There is a charge of $75 for that, but everything's provided, clubs and food as well. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions for him?
Yeah, I, I do have a quick question. Could you give a brief update on the PLEAC accreditation?
Sure. We're through most of the policies. The policies are done. What we're doing right now is we're working on proofs, and what a proof is, is basically the standards that PLEAC lists in their, in their requirements. There's four chapters, and there's a bunch of standards that you have to hit. So a proof is actually that we did something. So if we Mirandaize somebody, we have to have a report that says that. That's a proof. So we're gathering them right now. We're going through the records management system to try to locate all the things that we, they need. There's some things that we haven't done, so there'll be, you know, that, we won't be able to provide that, and that's not a big deal if we haven't done it. There's some things regarding housing of prisoners that won't apply to us, because we don't house prisoners here. So myself, Lieutenant Corporal McCarthy, and we've put out the list to the officers as well to ask them if they, since August of last year to August of this upcoming year, will be the timeframe that we're going to use if they remember having an incident that involves something like a search or that they can, you know, copy and give to us that we could add it to the, to the proof list. Hoping, you know, best-case scenario is, is we can get a mock, mock inspection maybe sometime in May. And hopefully by, you know, August, we'll have our, our full assessment. And I think we're, we're well on track to be able to get that done. Couple things we got to do with the building, but they're minor. We'll take care of that. And, but it's, it's coming along really well.
Thanks for your opinion.
Sure.
Is there anything that you need from us, or you would like from us?
No, just the, the couple things with the building. I don't know if there's funds that, in the, in the budget to take care of that. We got to secure the, the evidence room, the roof in the evidence room. We're going to have to secure an evidence fridge to a wall, believe it or not. We have to, so you can't walk out with it. Yeah, it's, uh...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to laugh, but I, I can't believe you guys have to think of all this crazy stuff.
Right. And then some Knox boxes, that's where, where, they're in the process, but we'll have them done. Other than that, no, I think we're, I think we're okay. We'll be able to get it done.
Good.
Anything else?
Any other questions from the board?
Did you have a question?
Any public comment or questions? Bob, was that better? Can you hear now?
Very good, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, township engineer. Wow, our two-minute reports are really long here. This is crazy.
I'm going to have to change the name there.
Well, the first I'd like to talk about is the Paul Lehman project. I did give Lori an update, and I, I believe that she shared it with, with the board. But, uh, so, so what's going on right now is Dolee Construction, who was awarded the bid, has a tentative construction date of July of this, of this year. We have a pre-construction meeting on the books for April 29th. And as I've told Lori, that the Dolee Construction's been very communicative to us. They are going through the same challenges as many other construction site firms with procurement of materials, labor, et cetera. They even came up with a different idea for, a different pipe class to utilize. We did our research. We did not like it, but we did talk to Nick. And Nick did not like the, the alternative as well, and Lori. So we, we responded back to them that that would not be accepted by the township. They understood it, but we did appreciate the fact that they were trying to expedite the project for, for, for the township. So that's really where the state, where the status is for that project. Any questions on Paul Lehman?
How long do they think it'll take?
Probably about two months, but they'll stage it throughout.
Yeah.
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 So will they have to close Paul Lehman for two months?
They won't have to close it, but they're definitely going to have to stage it as they go. So someone on the, let's say, the south side or the low side might be able to access their driveway going up Paul Lehman, and then as it progresses, they might have to come back the other way.
Okay.
As soon as it starts, we'll certainly let the township know and the police department and the emergency services.
Okay.
Thanks.
The second item of discussion is the, the Act 167 Drift ordinance that we had talked about. As you know, we submitted in early January our comments and concerns. I reached out to them just on April 1st to get a response a couple days later that they had, in February, that the county had approved this. So they did not notify the townships. They did not notify, they didn't notify...
So all those comments that we did, they just completely ignored them?
No, no, the comments were addressed, but the, the funny thing was, is no one knew that this had occurred.
Yeah.
The vote. So, so I had attended two different events. You know, another engineer put together the report and submitted it. Lori was copied on everything, and none of us got an email that stated this. So if, if I hadn't poked the bear, we wouldn't have known this unless you, you went onto their, their website. So what I, what I can give you, I apologize, this is very high-level, because I just found out about this yesterday.
No, it's okay.
So February of 20, February 10th is when they approved the resolution. There's going to be two separate workshops. There's one that's going to be on May 6th and one on May 24th. I plan to attend it in person, but, but you, there is a Zoom alternative if anybody would like to, to attend that as well. The other, the other item to note is that Corey Trago, who was our contact, who's been assisting us with all of this, has stated that although the DEP has stated that September 30th is the deadline, as long as the townships are working towards that, they are not going to strictly enforce the September 30th deadline.
That's kind of what they did back in 2014.
Okay.
So, so we'll have time to go through this, give our recommendations, because if you recall, there are abilities for the townships to add, delete. There are certain things that are mandatory to be included to, to, to hold true to the Act 167, the MS4 program, et cetera. I will note that I did, they did put together a spreadsheet of all the various townships and residents listed concerns. I briefly looked at it. Three of ours were addressed. The one that should be noted right off of that is the question about the waiver. That is not changing. We were the only township that commented upon it, so...
That's really interesting.
We were the only township that said that?
We were the only one that was listed on the, on the, on the report. So, so just as a reminder that if, once the ordinance is passed...
Lori, well, that's not going to happen, then.
So, so when, when the ordinance is passed and if adopted by the township, anybody who would be looking for a waiver from the Stormwater Management Ordinance from the township would have to get approval from either the Conservation District or the DEP prior to the board being able to support the waiver.
Yay!
So I will, I will be going through the ordinance in a little bit more detail. Again, any more updates for the township, but I think maybe towards the later summer would be the time when we start to really dive into it and decide what would be the nuances, what we want.
Do you think this would be a, a workshop agenda item?
You guys? Probably.
Yeah?
I would say yes, and I probably want to back into, make sure we have the advertising timeline nailed down to figure out which meeting it needs.
Go backwards in a second.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're going to survive.
I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I live in the mountains, so I was worried, wondering how long it would take to do it, sort of, to...
For Paul Lehman, okay.
Yeah.
That's it?
That's it for me.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Four discussion items. New business. Consideration of approval of the December tenth, twenty-twenty-one Encore Property Services LLC proposal for power washing and exterior painting of the township building for fifteen thousand dollars. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Lori?
So this is pretty much exactly what it sounds like. We're looking to get, the exterior of the township building needs to be power washed. There are some areas of the wood that have rotted that need to be replaced and we're just looking to put a fresh coat of paint on it. We did get three quotes to satisfy the twenty-twenty-two bid limits. This was the lowest one, seems, seems fine. I followed up with the, with the, I forget his name, but I followed up with Encore this week just to make sure his quote was still good. So we're, yeah, that's, we're looking to get scheduled with him because.
It needs it.
Yeah.
It's a.
Did you, did you pick a paint color?
We have not, we have not gotten into paint colors yet, but that is, we aren't going to be talking about paint colors. Not that, the trim color will stay, but we're looking at maybe the beige, maybe trying to.
Tung that back.
Yeah, make it a little less.
Beige-y.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I asked.
Just something to freshen it up a bit. I think it's very faded now too, so it's kind of hard to tell what the, what the original color was.
I can give you pictures.
Oh, great.
They're on the Wayback Machine.
Not that we care about matching the original.
I was going to say, do we want to match the original?
There are a lot more yellow.
You have, oh, okay.
Okay, great, great.
Lori, I will trust you as long as it's not purple with pink polka dots.
It will not be.
Okay with that.
It will not be, I can promise that.
All right. Does the board have any questions? Does the public have any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye!
Okay. Discussion and consideration of approval of the March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two proposal of Vince, is that McClatchy? Stonework Incorporated to repoint the stone chimney on the old township building for nine thousand eight hundred dollars. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second. Lori? So this was discovered, we, we are in the process of putting information together to bid, which is the next item on, it's not the next item, but it's on the agenda, to redo the roof at the old township building. As we were looking at that, we realized that the chimney is in need of some work and we have to do that before we can replace the roof. So this is actually a local, a local company. So that's, that's, that's pretty much, it just has to be done to maintain the structural integrity.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Bob, do you have a comment?
No comment.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of approval of three-year municipal lease purchase agreement for a twenty-twenty-two Ford F-30 for the road department in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars a year plus three percent interest through Co-Stars. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's a Ford F-three-fifty.
Didn't I say that?
You said F-thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry, F-three-fifty. Okay, an F-thirty, that would be terrible. Yes, an F-three-fifty, excuse me. So I made that motion and Susan seconded it.
Lori? Yes, so this, this was a budgeted item, this was planned for, for this year. This is replacing Nick's, Nick's truck, we're actually trading in his old vehicle. This was ordered back in December.
Yes.
It just came in last week. And so, and we got the information on, on the lease agreement. So it is budgeted for as a three-year lease. So fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars per year. We will make that first payment right away when we accept delivery of it. And then the next two years.
When do we expect delivery?
Well, they actually showed up here with it last week and I sent it.
Oh, that one?
Yeah, I sent it away because we didn't have, they didn't, we didn't have any updated paperwork on it. It's kind of been a, I mean, the vehicle market being what it is right now made it, made it difficult, but it's ready. If, when we're ready to take it, it will, it will come here. But we were not ready last week because we had no paperwork on it, so. Okay.
Okay. All right, does the board have any questions or comments? Does the public have any questions or comments?
Hi, Mike and Martin.
Go ahead, Bob.
From Paul and Martin, one staple subject there. In reading, but the email, was it a paper that said F-six-fifty in one of the lines?
That's a separate, that's a separate line item.
Yeah.
There's a later item on the, on the agenda that's an F-six-hundred. That's for later.
Okay. Okay. No questions.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and consideration of approval to purchase the F, I'm sorry, to purchase Ford F-six-hundred for the road department in the amount of.
Fifty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars.
Thank you. Co-Stars utilizing the liquid fuels funds. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second. Lori? So this has come up, again, with the vehicle market being what it is. The road department has a twenty-thirteen vehicle that is on the schedule to be replaced next year in twenty-twenty-three. However, Nick started doing some proactive research to find out through Co-Stars what pricing might look like and was told you are never going to get a vehicle in twenty-twenty-three if you hadn't already ordered it. If you wait to order it now, there, there just is hardly any availability of these vehicles, especially in the size that we're looking for. So we discovered that this, this Co-Stars dealer has one that's on order. I thought that it was in stock, it is not in stock, it is on order now. So that's the amount for the chassis itself. So the fifty-seven thousand can be purchased utilizing our liquid fuels money. The upfitting would be a separate fee we're expecting based, I met with the guy this morning, actually. It seems like we could potentially see this chassis this year. Hopefully in the next couple of months, we, we don't really know for sure, but it's kind, it's really low risk to us. If it doesn't come in, we're not on the hook for it. If it comes in, we pay for it and it's this price.
And then, how does this price compare to what these have been going, like, I understand you shouldn't be buying vehicles now because the plate prices are inflated. Are we paying inflated price or is this about, like, before, two years ago, is this about the right price?
And how much inflated it is?
I don't know the exact answer to that, but given that it's through Co-Stars, it's definitely cheaper than, I mean, that saves us money than somebody else trying to buy it not through Co-Stars. I don't know exactly what, what they generally go for, but the prices are only going to go up according to the rep that I met with this morning because Ford hasn't released their twenty-twenty-three pricing yet. So if we don't take this one, we have to wait until they release their pricing for the next ones before we can even order it. And he expects that to be an increase. They, Ford has already evidently said it's, it's going to go up. But.
Well, as long as you've done research on that, because I have to say, like, everybody else is saying don't buy vehicles now.
Right.
So I'm just concerned that we're buying a vehicle now that isn't even scheduled until next year. And maybe even next year, we would have said, hey, we could hold off one more year, so.
Is this, is this the truck that I'm going to be using for the trash pickup?
I don't know which truck you're using for trash pickup. I don't think so though, I don't think he would give you.
Yeah.
Because the market's right, this large of a truck. Everything's so bad enough that it's going to take years to, to catch back up.
Oh, you think so?
That's the concern, he, he told me today.
But now, do you feel like that's reliable? Because like, again, you're talking to someone who's trying to sell.
Right.
Vehicles. I'm just not sure that's an independent source. Did you?
Hondrew?
Ford?
Hondrew Ford?
Oh, okay, different dealer.
Yeah.
Not the one.
The Co-Stars prices, the cheap ones are, they're going to, we buy Ford Intersect utilities, little X-Corps, the one that police cars, they have a different name.
Yep.
The sticker price for that model is like forty-three something and we buy them for thirty-seven. Because they get to the Co-Stars car. So you can figure out that percentage and figure out.
But I'm just more concerned that if Co-Stars is fifty thousand this year and that's cheap because it should be sixty on the regular market, but is that car really worth thirty thousand if we waited two years? I mean, like, everybody is saying don't buy vehicles now, so it's just surprising.
We didn't see any difference in price, excuse me, we didn't see any difference in price last year versus this year for buying a car. Not, so I don't think the Co-Stars price is going to go up like the market is.
Okay, they're, they're more.
They're landing behind the hard.
Okay. Yeah, well, you've done research on this, I mean, I'll trust your judgment, but it is an unusual thing to be doing, I think.
Yeah, no, and, and I agree, and that's why, you know, Nick brought it to me and we weren't planning to buy one this year. We, it, it's kind of just a gamble and Nick, there are, he's not having any issues with the truck right now, but next year it is going to be ten years old, like, who knows? And then we run the risk of if we don't, if we don't try this, if we don't take this one, we don't know when we might get another one. We could wait and see, maybe the truck will last, it's not having any issues. But if we do this and it doesn't come in, there's not really any.
We could put the one we have up on municipal bid and considering the fact of how much we got for the one vehicle that we put up there, we may end up paying, this may end up paying for itself.
Well, and that's what I, I would recommend, I would not recommend we trade it in because, I mean, first of all, we're only, this chassis is not even in stock right now. So we may not even see this until.
Yeah.
Another couple of months from now. And then the upfitting has to be done separately and he, he's not even anticipating being able to start that, to have the body to be able to do any of that work until maybe December. So really, we'd be looking at potentially, if this comes in, buying, spending this fifty-seven thousand dollars this year, we probably won't, we could then budget for the balance out of next year's budget because the work is not going to be done and we don't pay for that until the work is completed. So the other piece is, this is not budgeted for. However, I talked to our liquid fuels rep yesterday, we have a, a new one, it's now our third new liquid fuels rep. But we can use, like, we've not purchased equipment from liquid fuels in several years and you can use twenty percent of your cumulative budget to purchase equipment. So we have more than enough money in the liquid fuels account to cover the purchase of this truck, this fifty-seven thousand, plus all of the paving and all of the other things that we need to do. So it wouldn't impact the general fund budget at all.
That's great.
And if it doesn't come in, we don't pay for it. We don't pay anything until it actually arrives at the dealership, yeah. But ultimately, it's, what level of risk are you willing to?
How optimistic are you feeling about the, the vehicle market in a couple, within the next couple of years? Not very right now.
And how trusting would you be in a ten-year-old vehicle?
A ten-year-old, that, that's the, that's the struggle. We, it, we would have planned, this would have been an ask in the twenty-twenty-three budget for, for Nick, so. Do we do half of it early?
Yeah. Okay. Any more questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Authorize advertisement of bid for roof replacement on the old township building at one oh one Valley Park Road, Phoenixville. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori? So I don't know why I didn't put those two items back-to-back when we were talking about the chimney, but this is for the roof replacement for the old township building. We are hoping, we're kind of right on the line of the bid threshold. We don't know exactly for sure that it's going to be over the twenty-twenty-two limit of twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars, but we figured we better just advertise it just to be safe. If it comes, if it comes in under, cool. If not, we don't want to have to.
It's probably going to come in over.
I think so, based on.
Based off prevailing wage, the shingles having to be demoed and removed and, and taken away, plus then redoing it.
Yeah.
It, it, it's at the threshold, but the gut is saying that it's, and we're having, and we're struggling to find roofers who want to give a quote for it.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're just busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so again, that might be a premium.
Yeah, so luckily we have to do the chimney first, so at least it buys us a little bit of time. But D and M is helping us and we'll go through Penn bid just like we did for Paul Lehman.
Is it leaking?
It, it is leaking, but it's.
Yeah, there was a small leak in the one, one corner in the second floor.
Okay.
Then Nick, Nick showed it to us and everything like that, but it didn't cause any damage. And I think they, they did do a emergency repair.
Okay.
Now, did you just say we are, you think we may be paying a premium to have it done right now? Or you didn't say that?
I did, because the, the challenge is, again, it's, we're, we're having a hard time just, we, we were trying to get ideas for what the costs were going to be and we, we pulled all the information from Ariel saying like, this is the square footage and stuff and the roofers are still like too busy, you know.
It's kind of a small job comparatively.
Yeah, it's a small job.
So again, if it's not leaking right now, is this something?
But it is, you just said it was.
I thought you said it didn't do any damage though.
It did, it didn't do any damage, but it was patched, it leaked through. So, so, so Nick got up or had somebody go out there and fix it quickly. So it didn't cause, it didn't damage any equipment or anything like that, but it did get through.
And so like the patch isn't going to hold, we can't put it off because you feel like it could leak again?
Yeah, yeah, that's, you know, I brought out a, with someone from our construction management group and he was out there taking pictures and looking and he's, he's experienced in this and he, and he agrees. Like this, this is something that has to be replaced. It's useful, life has, it, it is over at this point, so you're playing with a lot of our money.
And I, I did also just kind of alert the historical commission to it as well because it is obviously a historic structure, so they're aware that we'll be replacing it. And when we get to that point, we'll seek their input on the shingles and the colors and, yeah.
Does the board have any questions or comments? Does the public have any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Discussion on twenty-twenty-two road department curb replacement plan.
So Nick is looking to get started on the replacement of the curb that he'd like to do for this year. He's looking to do it at the end of April, early May. He is, he has identified Rossiter, Green Hill and Laurel Lane, so those are the areas he'll be doing. We are working on, you know, normally, I think in the past, we've kind of presented the curbing and the paving program at the same time. I'll come back with, with the paving, he'd like to get started on this sooner. And because the contractor is getting scheduled, he, he works in many other townships, so he wants to get his dates scheduled so that we don't have to wait. Paving won't start until after school lets out, but going forward, Paul is helping us. We're working on putting together a more formal curbing plan. I think we talked about this at a meeting once before, so that we have a several-year plan of we, we know which curbs we're going to replace every year and in what neighborhood so that residents can.
Play it on rotation.
That's nice.
Yep, exactly.
Play it on the website.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you can just click right on it and see what year your curb's getting replaced, yeah.
Yeah, I think Gilmore had done a, a very basic plan just to get started. And I think at the time, when they, when he graded them, the ones that were the worst, I think we thought it would take eight to ten years to bring them up to, to where it was acceptable. Not that everything's perfect, but to where it was kind of like a median acceptable. And I think we hit that. I don't think we have any that are really, 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 really bad anymore.
Well, well, Nick is, I, I tried to get out with Nick this week and it got postponed until Monday next week. He and I are going to go together, drive around and the thought being that we'll go around and similar to how we created that road program plan, instead of a big book, it's a colored plan with, you know, kind of red, yellow, green. We were going to do something like that with the curb so that we can, we can project what we think are going to be the problematic areas, be able to present it to the board so that you, you have input, have, you know, you can drive and take a look at what we're proposing.
Yeah, that's great. Do you need, do you need us to do anything, vote on anything?
Nope, just, just informational and we will put that, once we have more solid dates, we'll put that out on the website and we can send it out through email list too.
Okay. All right, number seven.
Let's have the discussion first before we do the motions.
Okay.
Uh, can, so, so we're looking at, uh, historical commission nights, need a, need a new liaison?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Can anybody do Mondays? I, I can do Mondays. Uh, that is a Monday meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
I can do it. I'll do it. You okay with that, Bob?
I couldn't hear. Let's do it again.
Are you okay with me being the historical commission liaison?
Oh. Sure. I was gonna, I was gonna take it if you couldn't, but if you can, I've got a lot on my plate right now, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
It'd be great.
Okay.
You also have open space, so, and do you feel like you have enough time? Like, should we?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, if we need to, we can talk to Danielle and see if she can pick up one, so it's fine. We'll see.
We can always cover for each other, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I guess we do.
I was gonna give it to the guy on the phone.
Yeah. Oh, gosh, that's funny. All right, appointment of Martha Majeski to replace Danielle Jewen as the board liaison to the historical commission. I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'm second.
Am I not to, am I not to do that for myself? Okay.
We can pick one of us.
I got Susan.
All three of you did.
I heard her first.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Martha.
Aye.
And I can pick it up next year if I have to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mondays are just bad for the deal.
Okay, resolutions and ordinances. Resolution number twenty, twenty-two dash twelve, amending the twenty twenty-two fee schedule. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, we all know what this is about. This is about the, um, peddler's permits, where we had to change the fee schedule, 'cause we didn't do it when we did the ordinance, so.
We need a solicitation fee.
Yes. So, um, does anybody have any questions about that?
I will just add that I did change the name from peddler's permit to solicitation fee, because it felt more-
You okayed us?
Yeah.
Rather be eighteen minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? And Chief, you're okay with this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, adopting the Chester County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Lori, do you wanna say anything, just for public?
Sure, we-
Thirty seconds?
Yep, we were contacted by the county, just, um, informing us that we, with a lot of the changes that we've had, we needed to update a lot of our documentation related to emergency management, so this is kind of step one. It's just, we needed to update. They updated their hazard mitigation plan, so we have to adopt their updated hazard mitigation plan for the township. We'll have some other things that will come up that I'm gonna work through with, um, our emergency management coordinator, Raf, who does not know that yet, but I will tell him. I'm gonna be asking for some help, yeah.
Okay. Um, do I have to read this entire ordinance?
No.
Okay, or not ordinance, um, resolution?
No. No. No, the motion is fine.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We have nothing under subdivision and land development? We have any additional business? Anyone? I do have a few announcements here, and whoever did this, thank you.
I did.
I wrote things down, and I left them at home, and thank God most, most people didn't hear them.
I knew we had a bunch of events all pop up at once, so.
Okay, a couple of announcements here. The traffic advisory from our neighbors in Charlestown Township. Coldstream Road between Township Line Road and Charlestown Road will be closed on Saturday, April ninth, from seven AM to nine AM for an earth day litter cleanup. Avoid the area during that time if possible. Chester County Solid Waste Authority is hosting a hazardous, household hazardous waste event on Saturday, April ninth at the Phoenixville, in Phoenixville at the Technical College High School, Pickering Campus. Most of us know that as cat pickering. Registration is required and can be done on the Chester County Solid Waste Authority's website. We also have a link on our township website. The upcoming Phoenixville Area Police Athletic Events, um, Chief did talk about these earlier. Additional information is available on the township's website. There's a babysitting training class on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at the Phoenixville Middle School from nine AM to four PM, and the golf clinic for ages seven to fourteen, beginning April twenty-fifth at the Knickerbocker Driving Range. The Pickup Pennsylvania will be taking place on April twenty-third at eight AM at three thirty-three Paulings Road in Phoenixville. The event is being hosted by the Schuylkill Township EAC. They will be picking up litter along Paulings Road from the Schuylkill River Bridge to the Valley Forge, to Valley Forge Road. Safety equipment will be provided for any attendees, and we are looking for volunteers. Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Police will be doing traffic control, and again, that starts at eight, eight AM. The First Annual Brew with the Blue will be held on Thursday, May fifth, from eight AM to ten AM at My Favorite Muffin. The swearing-in ceremony for the promotion of Corporal McCarthy to Sergeant will be held in the Schuylkill Township Meeting Room on Thursday, May fifth, at six PM. Light refreshments will be served. And the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Valley Park Municipal Park will be held on Saturday, June fourth, at one PM. On April ninth, this Saturday, the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company is sponsoring an egg hunt, and registration starts at nine thirty. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Excuse me. Okay, that's all the announcements that I have. Do we have any public comment? Come on up, Rick.
Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Zinnamerman, come on up. You okay?
I'll make, yes, excuse me.
It's okay, take your time.
Just grab the mic and bring it back.
Uh, Ken Zinnamerman, seven oh two East Anderson Avenue. Sorry for all this. It's kind of a stupid thing, but are we gonna say, stay on Eastern Standard Time, or are we going to go to?
I don't know that we have any say in that, but I think we're probably gonna, I-
That's a law, Scott.
Oh, God!
Thank you.
Martha was about to go into, like, a debate.
Oh, my God!
I did, I noticed that halfway through the meeting. I was hoping nobody was gonna point it out. I made a mental note to do that tomorrow.
Nineteenth, which was a Saturday, the firehouse had its annual cleanup. Um, we cleaned the leaves up, paved the property. Uh, this year, we had over forty volunteers, including boy scouts and members. Um, we tasked this year with cleaning Valley Park Road from Jug Hollow to the main station, as well as the storm debris left in the creek along Valley Park Road. Uh, if you go by there, it looks pretty good now. Just wanted everyone to know we're helping out.
That's great. That was a big mess down there, so thank you guys for doing that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Hey, you guys did great work. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other public comment? I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Second.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone.
Finished at seven thirty.
Seven thirty? Thanks, Bob. We'll talk to you later.
Thank you, Bob.